Good evening, we'll call the October meeting of the Joplin Schools Board of Education to order. Roll call, Mrs. Worsler.
President.
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
President.
Here.
If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Greenly, a second by Mrs. Sherrick, to approve the agenda as presented. And I will strike, excuse me, this is my report, so it's not an action item, but we will strike the board goals this evening under the board president's report, okay? Any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Teacher Proud Tuesday, congratulations Joplin High School teacher Luke Smith. Luke currently teaches Spanish at Joplin High School, but previously taught art in the district. He was nominated by a parent who had this to say. Mr. Smith creates a learning environment that's creative, engaging, energetic, and comfortable for all kids. He creates lessons that involves all forms of learning, from music to art. He grabs the students' attention and makes them want to learn. To have students look forward to your class every day means you're connecting and making a positive impact. My students have said that his class, there are high expectations, but also a level of trust that you will do the right thing. Thank you to Luke Smith. Congratulations to Dr. Heather Van Otterloo. Congratulations to South Middle Schools' Dr. Heather Van Otterloo for earning the 2024 Outstanding Educator of Gifted Award from the Gifted Association of Missouri. Dr. Van Otterloo was recognized at the Gifted Association of Missouri's annual conference at the University of Missouri in Columbia, and has been presented with the Delma Johnson Outstanding Educator of Gifted Award for exceptional efforts to provide top-notch opportunities for Joplin's gifted students. And Dr. Van Otterloo says receiving this award is a profound honor. Congratulations. Homecoming in Joplin. We had a few fantastic homecoming events. There were Spirit Days, the Downtown Parade, Pep Rally Traditions, the Royal Homecoming Court, a big varsity win, and a jam-packed Saturday night dance. It was a week to remember. Thank you to our alumni, community, students, and staff for such a great week in Eagle Nation. We have some photos of our homecoming parade as well. Thank you to KCU. We are incredibly grateful to our neighbors at Kansas City University, medical students at their Joplin campus, for continuing their huge commitment to teaching our Eagles through annual Anatomy Academy workshops this fall. They began a seven-week hands-on journey to learn about the systems of the human body. It's an immersion that offers lifelong lessons to our students and opens their eyes to possible futures in the medical field. Thank you to KCU. Joplin Schools Foundation Alumni Hall of Fame banquet. The Joplin Schools Foundation inducted three more incredible alumni at the annual Alumni Hall of Fame banquet. Dr. Mitch Shennett, Joplin High School, class of 1964. Glenda Austin, Parkwood High School, class of 1969. Kyle Craig, Joplin High School, class of 1965. These three have made great impacts in their fields locally, nationally, and around the world. We thank everybody for their contributions to Joplin Schools even when they leave us. We have one more tonight. It is not on my list, but we wanted to sneak this one in. Congratulations on your retirement to Shelley Toft. So Shelley will retire on June 30th of this year, and we are so thankful for everything that you've done for Joplin Schools and your commitment to our district, and we know that we are better off because of the work that you've done. So we thank you again.
Thank you.
And I have another one. I'm going completely off-script tonight. So every year, Missouri School Boards Association has a variety of different training and programming for everybody on school boards and that are associated with school boards. I'd like to read a letter that was sent to me last week from the Executive Director of Missouri School Boards Association. Dear Riley Hartwell and Carrie Seketa, the Missouri School Boards Association is pleased to announce that Cheryl Worsler is one of the first to have completed the initial level of MSBA's New Board Secretary Academy. MSBA created the academy to encourage district staff serving as the board secretary or supporting the appointed board secretary to participate in professional development and continuous improvement practices. To achieve the basic level, Cheryl was required to serve as the board secretary for your district in good standing for at least one fiscal year, complete 10 eligible training hours, join MSBA's Board Secretary listserv, and observe board meetings from at least three other school districts in person and virtually, and submit the required documentation to MSBA. It is obvious that Cheryl takes her job seriously and is committed to growing as an employee. Please take the time to congratulate her and encourage further training as a board secretary. This position is vital to the success of the board and the district. Thank you for being a member of Missouri School Boards Association and supporting its programs. Sincerely, Susan Goldammer, Chief Law and Labor Policy Officer, and Melissa Randall, Executive Director. The Student Advisor Report, Ms. Rutledge. Nope, I lied. Kelsey Norman celebrations, Mrs. Munn. We'll start with her and then we'll go back to the Student Advisor.
Did we lose her?
Okay, we're gonna go back to the Student Advisor, we're gonna go out of order.
The Joplin Eagle Pride Marching Band has had an outstanding season this year with many notable performances and awards. Among these, they placed first in their class at Vau-Hara Competition as well as Branson. Other awards they've received this season include Best Drum Line, Wins, Marching, Percussion, Drum Major, and General Effect. With awards to their outstanding clarinet duet as well, the band is making a name for themselves as one of the best in our area. Joplin's JROTC participated in the Homecoming Parade and Carthage Maple Leaf Parade this month, and also held our annual Fall Farm Party hosted by our Booster Club at the farm. They also have done an excellent job representing our school so far. JHS Art Students have recently had three trips to explore future opportunities at universities. In September, a group of advanced senior students attended National Portfolio Day at Kansas City Art Institute, where they were able to tour the campus and receive feedback on their portfolios from professors. Most recently, students also attended MSSU for their Discovery Day and their High School Art Day, where they participated in various art workshops with faculty.
Okay, thank you so much for the celebrations at Joplin High School. Now, we'll move on to our Kelsey Norman celebrations, Mrs. Munn.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of you for coming and being here tonight. So I just have a few slides just to show you a little bit about Kelsey Norman. First picture is just our staff. Here it was actually the end of last year, but they are still all the same with a couple new additions, but all the same staff as last year as well. And then the next slide, we have an amazing staff here at Kelsey Norman. Our PTO is extremely involved here. Our students are eager to learn, and our staff is very eager to help those students. And also, I pointed out in there that we have grown right around 30 students since the end of last year, so our enrollment is up, and we are currently at 306 students. Some initiatives that we are focusing on this year in relation to our school improvement plan. The first one is just some pictures of our after-school tutoring. We have really focused on after-school tutoring this year. Thank you to Career Ladder. That has helped give incentives for our staff to tutor more students. So we focus on reading and math instruction, phonics instruction. Currently, we have 14 different small groups after-school and four student activity groups that are meeting. So that is a large amount. Right there, you see kindergarten in those pictures. Our kindergarten teachers have done something really neat this year with tutoring. So they've realized that an hour for kindergarten is very difficult. So we have three teachers that take a larger amount of students, but they break them into smaller groups, and they're with them about 15 minutes, a little longer, and they focus, and then they move to a new group. It keeps the students excited, keeps the teachers excited to work with new students, and we service a lot more students. So that is something we've done in kindergarten, but we're really excited about meeting the needs of more students through tutoring. Another focus that we have is through our title programs. These are just a few of our parent events that we do. We're getting ready to hold Math City, which is a big event for our school. We just finished with Muffins in the Morning. We do Breakfast with Buddies as well, and that was a picture last year that we did, which was Camping Night, and it was really fun for our students and our parents to read And then we also are working still on our attendance. We have a building goal of 96% for our attendance goal. We do daily, monthly, and quarterly goals for our students and incentives. And this is just a picture last year at the end of the year for one of our celebrations in the spring. And then the next page just shows what we're doing for each quarter for our attendance this year. So Black Light Dance Party, special lunch and cookie decorating in the second quarter, extra park time, we can walk to the park, and then a water party at the end of the year. So just trying to keep them excited and often about their attendance. And then our SOAR assemblies. We recognize our students monthly. We also recognize for attendance during that, and then any other Character Kid recognition, any other special recognition or awards that we need to give out are done monthly as well. And then the last page I wanted to show, we're really proud of our playground improvements. And I hear that you're actually talking about a playground improvement tonight. So this right here is our picture of our playground. The first one was really the week after school was out last year, that our grass was, what grass we had was pulled up, and then the beautiful green grass at the end of the summer. So we love that. Our track was resurfaced, as well as a new basketball goal, our basketball court, so lots of improvements on our playground, and our kids love that. That's a little bit about Kelsey Norman.
We are so appreciative, and I shared with the staff earlier this evening, that it's great to be able to be with you and to hear what's important in this building, and it's amazing. You know, we've done enough of these at this point in time. I love to see the contrasts in buildings. I was visiting with another administrator earlier this evening about that, how everybody has their own niche, right? And I love hearing that, and I love what makes, hearing what is really exciting in a building. So it's wonderful to be with you tonight. I'll also say for me, I am glad to be the board rep at Kelsey Norman, and I've been to Math City, the camping night, the SOAR assembly, and those are all very well-done, and the kids have a great time, and I know that's the case at all of our schools. But to be a part of that and to be able to share in that with you is always a pleasure, and it's always fun to be at Kelsey Norman. So thank you again for having us tonight.
Thank you for being here.
Superintendent's Data Report, Dr. Seketa.
Okay, each month we bring you something from a strategic plan that cross-references or supports or is directly involved with the strategic plan. And this month, in operations, our Transportation Department is gonna talk to you about some of their program evaluation. Mr. Harding, Dr. Harding.
Yes, I'll have Travis and Wade, Henry Pullman, he's still here, you stick around, and then Cody Harrison come up, and they have some agenda items tonight, and so we thought it would also be a good idea for them to come up and kinda talk with you about some of their goals that they're working towards, and have a little, start with last year, what happens this year, where they're at in transportation, and what plans they have for moving forward.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. As you know, I just completed my first year here. Right out of the gate, we had some hurdles to jump. You know, it's always a living, breathing entity upon itself in the Transportation Department. We're, we've made significant gains, and be happy to share those with you. On the next slide, there's a little bit of transportation data up there. We have 102 total routes serving 17 different campuses across Joplin. Total employees is 107. 52 of those are full-time, part-time drivers, 21 bus aides, six sub-drivers, 13 aides. We currently have seven driver trainees. Going to make two more offers tomorrow, so hopefully that number will be nine after tomorrow. Four mechanics and four in our transportation leadership. We have 77 buses. We travel almost 800,000 miles. The daily square miles covered is 71. Total students transported daily, 2,819 at the moment. Our total cost for fiscal year '24 was almost $3 million. Our state aid for fiscal year '24 was almost 1.8. Last year, we drove 157,540 miles on extracurricular trips, and our transportation drives around 4,600 miles a day. So there's a lot going on, a lot of moving parts. So one of our main goals, or the main goal, this last year that Dr. Harding and I had set was bus driver retention. When I came in, that was an obvious issue, and so we've tried to focus hard on that. We've done several different things to increase that, and I'll talk about that on the next slide. But there's just some data right there on where we ended up for, from August of 2023 to August of 2024. When I came, when we started in August, we had eight full-time positions open out of 52 full-time drivers, 52, yeah, full-time drivers. When we started school this year, we had zero. We were fully staffed, fully ready to go. We had some unfortunate things kinda happen to some of our main bus drivers, ones that had been here for a while, things that were out of their control, you know, some medical issues, things like that that took them out for several weeks. We still have one that we miss very dearly. She's a great lady, but hopefully she'll be able to come back, but it's gonna still be a little while. We had one driver retire last year. Eleven drivers resigned. Four went to new jobs outside of the district. Three were for medical reasons, four moved or had family reasons. And then out of those 11, we actually had three that came back. So we happily hired them back. They were good people. They just left for just a little while to go try something different, or they had a medical reason why they had to separate for over a while. So our total loss of fully licensed drivers, August '23 through August '24, was the total number of eight or 85% retention rate. So going from there, going from August '23 to August '24, I was very pleased with the outcome of that, considering the number of employees that we do have in the Transportation Department. Our current for 2024 is we do currently have two full-time and one part-time open, but I've already got those slated to be filled once the, a few of the trainees that are training with us get their driver's test passed. So I expect that to happen in two to three weeks. The biggest, the biggest key is I've discovered is to try and keep that substitute pool full, but you know, things aren't, things aren't cheap in this world at the moment, and so part-time, everybody's looking for a full-time job and wanting to get 40 hours. So then we developed, some of the things that we've done, when I got here in October, I created a driver and aide mentoring program along with a couple of the trainers, and that provides leadership opportunities to experience drivers and aides for increased feelings of being valued and experience of sharing their knowledge. We have a lot of experienced drivers, and we might as well use their experience to help the new ones tackle any problems that they see coming up, and rather than them just getting frustrated. Another thing that we did was created a Transportation Director Advisory Committee, and it was provided, created to provide leadership opportunities and a voice to the collaborative group of drivers and aides. Five drivers and two aides are selected at the beginning of each year. We just had our first meeting Monday with this group for this year. Are selected by their peers to serve on this committee. The Advisory Committee meets on the third Monday of the month, and we started, like I said, started this meeting last year in October of '23. We also have monthly bus driver and bus safety meetings that are held September through May. This allows transportation leadership to communicate with all transportation staff face-to-face, to provide training, policy updates, and allows for the transportation staff to ask questions of the leadership team. There's just never quite anything quite like face-to-face, kinda like what we're doing right here, right? So we're always continuing to work, we're always trying to build trust, we're always wanting to boost department morale, so we can create those authentic working relationships with our staff. And I feel like it's working. On the next slide, once again, I'm proud to say that all buses are inspected by each driver every day before any students are transported. The entire fleet of 77 buses are inspected each year by the Highway Patrol during spring break. Cody does a great job of organizing that and getting drivers in to help out with that. 2024, we received a 97% pass rate with 100% pass overall at the end of the inspection, and we received the exemplary, school bus maintenance award, which is 90% or higher for the 26th year in a row. So that's saying a lot. I know that whenever the Highway Department, when the Highway Patrol guys show up to do their inspections, they, they actually look forward to coming to see us because they know that we've went through everything with a fine-tooth comb.
This is the shameless plug.
Shameless plug. The last slide's just kinda a little bit about what it takes to be a bus driver. They have to be a minimum of an age 21, and then once they do go through the interview and everything, they'll go through work steps, which is a course to determine their ability to handle the job duties physically. OcuMed has them drag a 50-pound bag of beans across the floor to kinda simulate having to maybe take a student off the bus in an emergency. They have a weighted pulley system where they have to reach over their head and pull it down for a certain weight, which simulates having to lift the hood up, press the parking brake. They have to play, be able to apply so much pressure with their leg. So they go through a pretty rigorous, well, I don't know how rigorous is, but you know, they go through a pretty extensive, what am I looking for?
Test.
Test, thank you. There you go. Before, before they're allowed to come to work. And then we do a physical once a year within 60 days of the beginning of school. Each driver trainee, once hired, must obtain a CDL learner's permit. You know, it could cost them $40, they have to put some skin in the game, and they must hold this for a minimum of two weeks before a driver's test can be scheduled. And then each driver trainee must pass a written test, skills test, and over-the-road examination by the Highway State, State Highway Patrol before obtaining their Class B CDL with the passenger and school bus endorsements. This requires up to 80 hours of training and is also an additional cost of around $75. And then one thing that we have that makes this all possible is we have our four trainers on staff. That's what allows us to keep it going. I could not even imagine, or would I wanna imagine what it would be like if we didn't have that resource right there. So they're all certified Missouri bus driver trainers, and they also hold a full-time position with us. So that's everything that I have in my report. If anybody has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Well, Travis, you're definitely in a better position this year than last year with the people side. I commend you guys for 26 years of passing the Highway Patrol and the Safety Score, so great job, keep that up. And then a question I have for you, is there anything else that you need from us, or are you in a really good place at this point in time?
I don't wanna jinx us, Mr. Heard.
I mean, he needs a new bus. He needs a new bus.
Every, that's an every-year thing.
If things keep going as they have, you know, every time that we have some bus holds or things like that, you know, it is only really because it's one of those days where we might have four or five trips, and we might have one of those days where we have four or five bus drivers that are called in sick. Each, each time we have a driver out, if we don't have somebody in that subpool, and a subpool, they have the freedom to not necessarily have to come every morning and every evening. They have the freedom of kinda choosing when they're available, and for every one bus driver that we have out, it creates two to three holds. And you know, because of the way that we have it staggered with elementary, middle school, and high school. But you know, so far, we've been able to power through. A few times, we've had, you know, the mechanics have stepped up and driven, and a few times, Dave has allowed a couple of his guys in the afternoons come and help us, which we appreciate. So you know, as a whole, everybody that can help is helping, so that's a wonderful thing as long as we can continue that. I feel good about things.
So good progress year-over-year, and thank you.
Thank you.
You seem much more relaxed.
I am a little. It's hard to tell, right? You know.
Very good, thank you, Travis.
Very good, thank you very much, Travis and the team. Good work every day.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we will have our Health and Dental Plan update and Financial Statements by Ms. Toft.
Okay, on the Health and Dental, for the first quarter, our total expenditures are $2,539,021, which is a little bit, 31.2% of our total budget. We did, or that is $341,000 more than last year at this time. We did receive a prescription rebate this last month, it was $257,000. Had we not gotten that, our prescription expenditures would have been $309,000, and our total expenditures on the health fund would have been a little over a million, so we had very high claim. But I think part of that is attributable to we're switching to Anthem, and I think that UMR was pushing a lot of their claims through. That's what we are hoping is, was the cause of that. We're about $911,000 down for the year. And I know last month, Marty, you questioned like the decline of the total participants, and starting in October, it's not shown on here, but October 1st, we had 905 people, so that gets us back up to kinda where we were last year. And I think a lot of it was probably over the summer, people that had left or whatever dropped coverage is what some of that was. Any questions on the Health and Dental? Okay, moving on to the financial statements. For the first quarter, revenue compared to last year was up a little over a million, and expenditures were down about $877,000. Most of that had to do with capital projects fund, and that is all just timing of invoices coming in and everything, so I think everything will start even and out as we go through. We do have budget adjustments later in the meeting, but Prop C is up about $364,000, interest income is up about $334,000. And then the Beacon Collections are up about $490,000, and that's kinda the revenue fixture. Any questions on financial statements?
Thank you, Ms. Toft. Public comments, Mrs. Worsler. Thank you. The consent agenda. Entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Weaver to approve the consent agenda as presented. I will say, building off of what Mrs. Munn said, I just wanna, as I read through this tonight, there's a lot of good things in the consent agenda. I'd like to just call out the fact that we're hiring a new bond underwriter, which is very good for us as we continue to navigate through the best financial position for the district. In addition to that, the work at the playground at McKinley is on here tonight for SOD and an overlay of the basketball court, as well as a continued approach that this board has taken really on, making sure that places and spaces that touch our kids the most are at the best they possibly can be. And we're here at a school that, we've seen that happen, and we're gonna have it again tonight at McKinley. I know there's been a lot of deferred maintenance there over the years. Mr. Riddle's here with us tonight, and we just have so many good things that are happening in Joplin, and it's because of this board's dedication to doing what's right always for kids. So I appreciate that, and that's reflected in our priorities tonight. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Regular agenda, accounts payable, Ms. Toft.
Our bill list tonight is nine million four hundred and seventy-one thousand three hundred and seventy-seven dollars thirteen cents, and compared to a year ago, it was eight million, eight point two million. The main difference is we had some Crowder contracts that were paid, and then some capital projects, boiler replacement, and some utility bills. Any questions on the bill list?
Entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable as presented.
I move for approval of accounts payable.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Greenlee, to approve accounts payable as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Budget adjustments, Ms. Toft.
Okay, tonight, we're bringing the first budget adjustment for the year. You know, the budget is always a fluid document as we get progressed through the year, and more information is available to us than when first we're projecting back in the spring. We're proposing an increase to revenue in the amount of two million three hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-five, and then an increase to expenditures in the amount of one million eight fifty-three, five forty-seven, netting to an increase of five hundred and twenty-five thousand six hundred and eight in our fund balance. Part of that is grants that have come in, or grants that maybe didn't get finished out at the end of last year, and some of those expenses maybe trickled over into this year, or they, we had new money that was given to us. One of them, the early childhood preschool grant, when we decided to do the early childhood classrooms, we knew there was money available, but we hadn't been awarded it and didn't get awarded until July of this year, but that was two hundred thousand. Dr. Dickey did a great job of, of tracing that down and making sure we, we got that, so. And some of the other ones are title allocations that were carried over from last year to this year. Are there any specific questions on the budget adjustments?
Entertain a motion to approve the budget adjustments as presented, please.
Good, just a clarifying question. So, so as I read through this, I mean, there, there's no net new expenditures, this is a revenue expenditure offset, some is carried over the rest, just to clarify that, right?
Just clarify, yes, for the most part, everything is, yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Greenlee, a second by Mr. Hurd, to approve the budget adjustments as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Franklin Technology Center, purchase of equipment, Mr. Harding.
Yes, that's me. So this was a, this is, this was a conversation I had with Dr. Dorton last week about this, when it came up, but basically, if you've never been to our manufacturing classroom at Franklin Tech, it's pretty impressive in there, and basically, some of the machinery they're using is a little bit outdated, and especially we're talking to some business partners, they want to make sure they update the equipment more to what those kids will see when they go into the workforce, anywhere from four axes probing to part binding and rapid threading in those classrooms, and so they're wanting to update some of the equipment in that classroom to more model what they're going to see in the real world when they take those jobs in manufacturing.
Wonderful. Any questions for Mr. Harding? Dr. Harding, let's say.
The equipment that's in there, Matt, I assume you guys will, are you going to sell that?
Probably, certainly, I'll sell it, yes.
Okay, okay.
Some of, there is equipment in there that's actually using floppy disks to run, so...
And the grants paying seventy-five percent of this, as I read, so are out-of-pockets twenty-five percent. Sounds like a good deal.
Yeah, if you can sell it for twenty-five percent what you have, it could be a wash law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mr. Robertson, to approve the Franklin Technology purchase of equipment for advanced manufacturing. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Purchase of seventy-eight-passenger bus, Dr. Harding.
I'll have Travis and Cody come up here, as they're the bus experts, purchasing the new bus, and kind of give you an update on the bus they're wanting to purchase and, and what they're looking at.
Is seventy-eight-passenger the normal bus size for little kids?
All right, as, as you can tell by the action item, we're looking to, for the approval to purchase one two thousand twenty-five International seventy-eight-passenger school bus. It'll be, come standard with all the Cummins engine, like everything else. We try to keep it all mostly together, it allows for, you know, to order more parts, a little bit cheaper price, especially if we can never find deals where, on filters and, and oils and things like that. Cody's, Cody is, knows the most about the, the specifics of the buses, so if anybody has any questions about that, I brought Cody along.
Cody, what's the life expectancy of a bus like this?
Fifteen to seventeen years.
Wow.
So are you going to be returning a bus?
We have multiple buses that are at the age that they're needing retired. Actually, some of you have seen the bus that's smoking going down the road. Several of you have messaged Matt about it. Those are all needing DPF filters that are four to six thousand dollars apiece. When we're starting putting that much money into it, it slowly becomes cheaper to replace the bus because it doesn't do anything for the electrical systems, the engine, the transmission, any of that. We have several buses that have blown engines right now. I've got three sitting, one in the shop and two behind the shop with blown engines. Engines are about thirty-six thousand dollars by the time we do it all, and again, it does nothing for the floor, the electrical, the lights, it doesn't fix any of the other issues.
So I don't have any issue with, with us buying another bus, but what I would like to see, and I think I mentioned this before, is your fleet has a schedule. You know all the ages and everything on them, and what would be helpful, the next time we're going to purchase another bus, just attach that schedule, so we can just see, okay, here's where it's at. You guys know which ones are going to age out, so we have like the whole picture. Because just buying one bus standing by itself, there's no context to that, but I know it's not the last, because you've got a bunch on the schedule still, so if you guys could provide that in the future, that would be helpful, but, I mean, you do have to turn on, I support that.
Absolutely.
Are we going to purchase more buses this year, or is this the only one this fiscal year?
This is currently the only one this year.
So how many buses total, was it seventy-seven?
I have seventy-seven. Two of them have, are damaged to the point that they're beyond repair. We're scrapping those out, and I have one that we currently have the engine tore out of, working on repairing it.
So if these last an average of fifteen to seventeen years, we're probably looking at an average of three and a half buses a year need to keep the rotation?
Yeah, four is kind of what we were thinking moving forward after this year.
So if we're purchasing one in this fiscal year, are we falling behind, or are we ahead of the curve a little bit previous years?
Midwest closed down bus production to switch to a Gen two bus. So there weren't any buses too available for purchase, so we bought extra buses in a previous year, and used the additional funds to purchase the camera system for this year.
But that's where if they provided that schedule, it would just lay it out for us so we could see what's coming up over the next couple of years.
So I would make a comment on this, it's, I've just been taking a few notes here. You have two that are damaged beyond repair, correct? So those are gone.
Yeah, well, we still have them, we're scrapping...
But they'll be gone, they'll be scrapped. Four that have blown engines.
Well, those two are in the blown engine list.
Okay, so two, okay, so four total of those, and then six that need more...
Yes, we're probably going to do our best to try to squeeze through without replacing any more of that than we have to.
And I'm sure you guys, like anybody else, you, you cannibalize, taking everything off the other ones that you can to use and...
They will leave us framed.
Yeah, you guys do the right thing there.
Switches lights, anything you can.
Now, also bring up, just in case somebody sees it in the financials, we had one bus that was ordered last year, at the beginning of last fiscal year, and it was supposed to be here the first part of July, so we cut a check for it last year, so it could be expensed last year, thinking it was going to be here the first of July, and then we still don't have it.
They're doing this Friday.
Coming, getting this Friday?
Yes.
So we had to void the check in last fiscal year, and reissue the check this year. So you will see two buses on financial statements, but the one is, was approved last year, so it's just been so hard to get a bus in here.
Yeah, I can remember, and when, especially during the pandemic, we really struggled to purchase buses as a board. We talked a lot about this when you were in your former position.
So I think it's really good that we have at least some type of more normalcy, maybe, if there is such a thing, in terms of the purchasing of these.
Right, and, and we're, we're even going to kind of look at maybe expanding into maybe a different type of bus, a different maker of a bus even, if, if it continues to be as hard to procure a school bus that we're currently getting.
How far out are they saying on the Gen two buses?
They told me that aren't, so if we purchase a bus today, our delivery date is currently March to May.
So at what point do we need to start looking at ordering the four buses for the next fiscal year?
As soon as we get the next one, we're going to look at it. They redesigned the Gen two buses. Matt said in them, they have some different blind spots, and we need to see how our drivers react to them. Some things about them say they could be easier to drive, other things say they could be more difficult, and we're going to see our drivers react to the changes they've made.
And this purchase is one of the Gen two buses?
Yes.
Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the seventy-eight-passenger bus?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Ms. Schroeder, to approve the purchase of a seventy-eight-passenger bus. Any further comments on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Purchase of two utility trucks, Dr. Harding.
Yes, I'll go ahead and bring Dave Pettit up here, because this is going to be in his realm as well, so we often purchase trucks for our utility crews in Skocraft, and what we're seeing more and more is it's not only our utilities, Skocraft are using them, but it's also our band, athletics are using them to pull trailers, and so we're finding that we're going to, we're kind of needing bigger trucks to haul some of this equipment and some of these trailers around, so let those guys take off with more details of the trucks we're proposing purchase.
Receiving two more, these will be three-quarter-ton four-wheel-drive trucks. We use these year-round. They'll be set up so that they will receive their setup for a special front end, so that they'll receive our snow plows, which will make it easier for us to clear snow. They'll also allow us to better haul our trailers as we move our mowers, equipment, we move our, our scissor lifts and lifts around quite a bit during the course of week at different locations, so a beefier truck will allow us to do that and hopefully extend the life. We've got some half-tons that we pushed pretty hard, pulling some of our trailers, and we're going to need to start moving those out to lighter gauge duty and replace that with these heavier vehicles.
So are these replacements or addition?
One will be a replacement, the other one with the newly posted assistant director position, we will supply one of those lighter gauge trucks for that individual.
Okay, thank you, David.
We clear our own snow on our property? We don't have a third party come in and do it?
That is correct.
Okay, well, last year was not very busy, so hopefully this year's not very busy.
Yeah, that's, I hope you did not just jinx us, but...
You know?
Yes, we take, we have taken care of our, our own snow plowing for, for a long time.
When we have the eighteen-inch snow, you know who to blame.
Hey, it's all right, we're snowballs. It's the snowball maker thing, it's really cool.
All right, I would make a motion to approve the purchase of the two utility trucks as presented by Dave.
We have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Mrs. Sherrick, to approve the purchase of two utility trucks. Any additional comments on this item? Hearing none, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Purchase of a Suburban, Dr. Harding.
Yes, as you can see on the action item, last year, you were all gracious enough to help us purchase a Suburban for our students and staff, and in one year, we put over twenty-eight, almost twenty-six thousand miles on that Suburban, and over half the time, that Suburban goes out with kids in it, whether it's a tennis team, it's science research, so it's often carries students. Like I said, saves a bus driver, saves a bus for routes. We were able to access the state account for purchase of a vehicle, and so, out of St. Louis, and so we found that a very good deal, and we would like to purchase one more Suburban that we could use to access for our staff and our students.
May I remember correctly, we approved two last year, but you only able to get one of them, so this is really the second one, right?
Correct, technically, yes.
I think this is a really good solution for small groups of people, whether it's our employees or our, our athletes or students.
Yeah, Matt put the math down there, I don't know if everybody saw that, but that's the exact math you should look at, and it's actually, although it's a lot of money, it's a cheaper option just to, to buy the vehicle here, so...
I would move that we purchase the vehicle.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mrs. Sherrick, to purchase the Suburban. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.